Liz Banks.
Fidelis Song Boeck.
Tom Welch.
Okay. Oh. Um. Okay, so the first order of business is the public hearing, so.
Okay.
Yeah?
In accordance with provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 11, the Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, May 31, 2023, at 6:30 PM at the Center Office Building located at 301 Main Street, Sturbridge, Massachusetts, 01566, and/or by virtual means if circumstances warrant in accordance with applicable law on the application of ICAON Architectural representing the town of Sturbridge for the property located at 480 Main Street. The applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant to Article 18, Section 300 hyphen 18.2 parentheses 2 and a finding pursuant to Article 15, Section 300 hyphen 15.2A of the zoning bylaw to expand, change, or alter a pre-existing non-conforming use or structure, the parking lot, for the property located at 480 Main Street. The applicant is proposing to expand the existing parking lot within the required rear setback to accommodate the proposed expansion of the senior center and additional parking. The rear setback is proposed at two feet. All other parking setbacks will comply with the bylaw according to the plans and supporting documents provided. The proposed request can be viewed at https://www.sturbridge.gov.gov/zoningboardofappeals/pages/recentfilings. Or arrangements can be made to view the application packet by contacting the Sturbridge Planning Department at 508-347-2508, or by email at jlacy@sturbridge.gov. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on this proposal should appear at the time and place designated. Members of the public may watch the meeting online via the town's on-demand video broadcast or via cable television on Channel 191. It is the intent to have this public hearing in person. However, if circumstances warrant, the board may choose to hold this hearing via virtual or hybrid, in-person or virtual, means. In the event of a virtual or hybrid meeting, notice and a link shall be posted on the ZBA website. Please note that the meeting/hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Elizabeth Banks, cheers. Sturbridge Zoning Board of Appeals.
Thank you. So we received information from Jeanne Bouban, the town planner, and the properties located in the commercial tourist district and the government uses are a permitted use. The dimensional requirements for this district are a minimum of 1,000, 10,000 square feet and a minimum of 100-foot frontage. The minimum setbacks are 25 feet from the front and 10 from the side, and the rear property lines have a maximum of 30% log coverage. So the existing parking lot is non-conforming. However, the area at issue is the rear setback, which is currently conforming. So, but in order to provide the needed parking spaces, it's required that they create. The parking lot is only going to be two feet from the rear setback, but no other non-conformities with regards to the parking lot and setbacks are being. I'm going to take that back. Other areas of the non-conformity with regards to the parking lot and setback are being eliminated by this proposal. So the rear parking lot will allow the green space to remain in the front of the building, and the property in the rear will be buffeted from sight of the parking lot by an addition of a fence that is proposed along the property line. And the rear parking allows for adequate room for deliveries as well as trash pickup and keeping that away from the front of the building. Other thing I would say is we, so we received information from the fire inspector, and he has no objections or concerns with endorsing this request. Conservation. They don't anticipate any concerns with the approval of the work proposed within the buffer zone. The building inspector is waiting for the building energy code information, but he has no objection to this project. You can make your proposal.
Good evening. Jacob Murray from Waterfield Design Group. We're the civil engineer and landscape architect. Also with me is Mark McKevitz, who is from ICAON Architects, the architect on the project. Jean laid out very well the situation. We are here for a special permit for an existing non-conforming use. Just to direct yourselves to the left side of the existing site plan up here, along where that entryway is, there's existing parking spaces that are about 13 and 1/2 feet off of the front parking spot, which is within 25 feet. We're removing those spaces and putting them all in the front and then putting more in the rear, so there'll be no spaces within the 25-foot front setbacks, but there will be spaces within the 10-foot rear setback, and that's what's along the property line with 4 Arnold. And as Jean had mentioned, there will be a vinyl fence along that area that'll be screening everything that's going on, particularly those cars in the senior center from the residential property next door. So, as Jean mentioned, that is, also puts more, adds more parking to the site, which is an expanded senior center. There is the rear portion of this is the expansion area, which is something that the town of Sturbridge is needed, and obviously with the expanded building, there's expanded parking being needed, which is why we have some more in the front and then obviously more in the rear. That also allows for the dumpsters to be in the rear with access and have that all screened from public view. Other than that, the site is increasingly impervious, so it has to meet stormwater regulations, and it does so through deep subcatch basins, proprietary separators, and underground infiltration chambers. We meet the landscaping requirements by adding a number of street trees along Main Street and Arnold Road that will create the, help to continue and create the small-town rural New England feel of Sturbridge as required by the bylaws. The generator is being moved up front for access, and that'll be screened as well with some more vegetation that'll be going around a small monument to the Snellville School that is in the lower right-hand corner of the, of the plan. Other than that, lighting will be added as per the requirements. There'll be some parking lightings on the islands for, for the vehicle lighting and pedestrians getting there, and then some lighting along the building and bollards along the walkways as well, going to and from the building. The islands meet the requirements for breaking up the impervious area as necessary, both in the rear and in the sides. And as the fire department has stated, the emergency, they have no problem with emergency access, and we have, we've illustrated that access is available for emergencies, both ambulance and fire trucks to the building.
All right. So I'll, Susan, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Just on, has there been a traffic study done on this with saying with the amount of parking spots in the front and in the back, which is being on Arnold? That's not a huge area of land in the front where the stop sign is on Main Street, and if that's like an event going on coming out, it's going to bottom those. That was just my only thought process on this. Knowing how that road is, is that on Main Street when you come out, there's not, what's the distance from the parking lot to the?
From the parking lot to Main Street, the parking lot to the entry?
So Main Street to the first entrance or exit?
For Main Street and the first exit, it's about 175 feet. So there is realm for queuing. A traffic study has not been done. It didn't hit the threshold to our knowledge for that, so.
I just was concerned with 26 parking spots there, and then the other ones, the amount of traffic that would come through on that if there was an event there.
There is, the trees are off the exits to provide better sightlines, but yes, obviously, if there was a lot of cars coming out, there could be some queuing right there to Main Street. I don't anticipate it would back up any further beyond the property then, though, into the residential area.
I'll set. Do you have any? I have a couple. So is the driveway entering going to be in the same place it is now?
Approximately, yes.
Okay. And how many spaces are there now?
Right now, there are 28 spaces, and we're increasing it to 49 spaces.
How many?
Sorry, there's 28 existing, 49 proposed.
So 49, okay. And my other, how high is the fence going to be?
Six feet high.
Six?
That's going to be right straight down?
That'd be straight down the property line, correct.
Those were my questions. Do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Marge?
Well, a couple of things that I'd like to clarify.
Go ahead.
First of all, I'm not too worried about the traffic and that, because that'll be taken on the cycle and review when they have to go to that, and that will be addressed then. But first of all, I'm very happy to see that they will be expanding that, the senior center, and I was quite impressed with the depiction of it and looking at the plans. I always had a concern about the row of parking that was right at the top of the hill in front of the face of the senior center, because I often thought if somebody put their foot to the pedal instead of going reverse to back out, they would have a long slide onto Main Street, and that could be catastrophic. Is there a way to put bollards up or something to keep that more safe?
We, so we will have a curb along the edge.
I see that.
Which will be helpful, and then there's actually, if you go one back mark, I believe it's a grading plan. There'll also be, since we're expanding the parking and the slope is currently going down, we have to keep the parking lot, though, at 5%. So at the edge of the parking, they'll actually, it's not, not great for, obviously, the vehicle going down, but it's a lot safer than going into the road. So it shouldn't go into the road, but it'll get down.
Well, I'm talking about where the parking is now in the front. That was always a concern of mine, because, you know, people can have a little TIA or something, and boom, they're right down, smashed onto, you know, Main Street. So, you know, you're dealing with seniors, and I couldn't speak, because I'm a very senior senior, as you can see. But I always was worried about, that was always a concern of mine. And with the deliveries, I also like where the deliveries and the trash picked up will be, and that that will be screened and that, you know, that'll make a lot of difference. I believe that the senior center is, expansion is necessary. And I want to know, and maybe Jeanette can answer this or somebody else, you know, another board member. Do you have any estimate of how many people, seniors from neighboring towns, come in and visit our senior center?
I'm not sure.
Because I know during COVID, they weren't giving shots to anybody from any town at, you know, because I know the day I was supposed to get one, I was told they ran out because people from other towns had come in and gotten the shots. So I don't know if anybody has the answer to that, you know?
Is it just a senior center for just our Sturbridge dressing?
I was wondering, yeah, you know?
That's a good question.
Is there anybody, so we have a better idea of how many more people will be coming, because the population's going to age in the other towns as well. And I think they probably could give that answer if they can talk by how many people apply for meals or something else there.
The senior center director would probably be the best one to know.
Yeah, I was just going to say.
That should have been, I think that was a question that should have been asked before, you know? Okay, let's see. We always needed the expanded, you know, and I am very impressed with the conceptual drawings of what we're going to see at the senior center. I think it's a lot safer for people. So I do applaud the material that was provided to us.
Thank you.
Hopefully, it'll move forward.
Jean will be able to get that information.
Yes, I think it's something that should be provided for site plan review and that.
Yep, I'll have Jean get it.
Because that'll give us a better idea of how many cars could potentially be coming in. And so I don't, you know, I wish there were some of Butters here who.
Well, I can, I can.
Well, we'll have the audience ask questions, so at least keep in mind.
But as I said, I think this was needed for a long time, and for the activities that we have there and everything else, I think the town is very fortunate to have the people we have that are running the senior center. I can't applaud them enough. I thank you for the information you provided. It was very complete and informative. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Marge.
Well, one other question.
Go ahead.
We didn't ask whether the Butters receipts were received. Okay. Before we're notified, that's important. Thank you.
Thanks. Mike, do you have any?
I have no questions.
Now, is there anybody in the audience that would like to?
I can have a comment.
Go ahead.
So Marge, regarding how many seniors go there, so they go at different times? They're not all there at the same time?
No, I know, that's what I'm saying. I would like to know an idea of how many, you know, what the average is, what on certain events, when they have physical things going on, or, you know, informative things when the police come in and instruct them about, you know, spam laws and things like that.
And regarding parking, I know for one, because my mom goes there, you know, so they do have a bus that picks, you know, some of the seniors who don't drive and then brings them, so, so not, not every senior who goes there.
Sorry, Fidelis. All right, Jean. Jean, you're on speaker.
Oh, am I? It's delayed on the tape. So I, I just, sorry I couldn't be there this evening, I'm under the weather, but I did reach out to Leslie Wong. And roughly, on an average week, they have 38 seniors from neighboring towns that come for a different event or, or something at the center.
Thank you.
So what was that in a nutshell?
Seniors visiting.
38 cars?
38 during, during the.
Sorry.
During the mine.
All right, thanks, Jean. Bye. Sorry, Fidelis.
Thank you.
So I was saying, regarding the parking, a lot of them, you know, they have a bus that goes, picks them up, and then brings them down. So, you know, you, you could have, you know, less cars than the seniors, because they don't know how to drive.
Right.
I didn't know that. Thank you. Any more questions from the board? Okay, in the audience, you have a question?
Yeah, I have to go in.
We're just going to need you to talk into the microphone up there. Yep.
I just wanted to ask the question about that fence in the back there. How, my property is right there, and my property isn't straight down, it's at a 90-degree angle, and I just don't want to come out of my house, out of my kitchen door, and, and be looking right in the senior center door.
That will, I mean, that will be a six-foot-high fence all the way from the property line with the hotel to about 10 feet before the property line, and that's just for sightlines again, and also mailbox, and a couple of things that we want to preserve at the end. So there, you should not be looking into the senior center at all.
Have you seen the architectural pictures of?
Yeah, it's big. Yeah, where's the dumpster going to be in there?
The dumpster will be on the hotel.
Oh. On the hotel side and back there?
That's from Arnold Road, right?
Correct.
You had a few up there a second ago where I could see a fence on the backing.
Yeah, that's Arnold Road. So it's, it's not as high as the, it's not as high as the building that's there now, right?
No, there's, there's nothing there now anyway.
No, but there will be.
Plus, there's vegetation. I mean, you have the fence, plus there's the trees and.
The vegetation on the Butters property will obviously not be.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Well, I just want to know, I just want to make sure I'm not cut right off there, you know?
That fence will be there to screen everything six feet below.
Yeah, well, like in the back, I got a, I got a gazebo, I got a ABBA, and then I got a wishing well in the back there, and I just want to know, make sure that I don't have to take them out of there, so you can put, so.
Those are on your property, yeah, they won't.
They can't touch it.
Yeah, okay.
Got a question about dumpsters.
I don't know where the vegetation is at your property, but I know that fence line is into the vegetation a little bit, but not.
Yeah, you know, I got a, I got a row of two daffodils, and that will be gone, but I'll have a little bit of other, other property right on the corner there.
In that area, I don't, we don't have details, because it's just a wooded area, but I don't, we know the gazebo would have been located in the survey, so that's definitely on your property. Once we get on your property again, survey wasn't, we, I don't remember about the daffodils.
Oh, no, that's, that's where, right where that, that little thing is in there, the line, the, yeah, in the middle, that's right there, but that's, that will be gone, and then, like I say, then you'll be going down there, like on, on an angle, like, right?
They'll be following that line, so I don't, it'll be.
So we are, we are.
There's unfortunately not a lot of landmarks out there, because it's a wooded area, but it would be.
Well, I just had it surveyed, and I got, he's got all the little flags up there that he put on it.
You can, where, where, if, if that, if the surveyor flagged property line, that property line would be, would be without fences approximately.
Okay. And if, if there isn't any, any, you know, if, if you're going on my land and you're going to cut all the trees down, you're going to cut all those trees even if they're on my side?
Not on your side, no.
Can't do that.
I think it will, it will be nice, though. I know it's going to be nice.
Is that the trash that's right to the back?
Yeah, right there is where the dumpster is.
And then where's La Quinta, right there?
Yes, the, the fence will continue to screen La Quinta in there on the other side.
Yeah, if there's anything that, that's usually the worst, like, I know it's seeded on one of the restaurants where the school is, and it's, the trash smell is horrendous when you're playing baseball, so. You jump on the field, so that's one thing, if there's something to keep off, tucked, that'd be a good thing to keep tucked, because I know they're going to have food events and stuff like that, and it'll get, especially in the summertime, it's not going to smell good.
Will they be screened?
Yes.
Okay. That, that will help.
Well, the dumpster where it is now, my neighbor and me, we don't have to have alarm clocks for 5:30 in the morning, bing, bang, boom, bang. I don't know what they put in their dumpster, but oh my God, the noise, the racket.
Ma'am, could you please?
That'll be further at least from you, which is looking at, it's just tough more than that. I can't say the dumpster drivers are going to be as quiet, but.
Ma'am, could you please identify yourself and give us your address? We have to have it for the record.
Carol Goedro, 4 Arnold Road, right in back of it.
Thank you.
Do you have any more questions about the parking lot?
No, I just wanted to make sure that it's, it's not going to push me out, you know?
Well, no.
Um, do you have any questions?
I do not, I'm here for the next one.
Oh, okay, thank you. All right. Anybody on the board have any more questions?
Just one observation. So currently, there's one driveway that goes into the property, so from this, we're going to have two, right? There's, there's one further up, and then another one at the bottom.
I think two curbs. But having that will help, people will be able to come in and out to the rear parking or the dumpster without having to get, to traffic jam with.
Same with the deliveries and as well, and the pickups, so, yeah. Thank you. Can I ask one more question?
Yep. Where is the fence going to start? Where is the fence going to start?
It'll, it'll start right about 10 feet off of the property line.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Then they won't have to move my mailbox, right?
Yes, that's, that's the reason we cut it down, so we don't have to.
Yeah, and then they got to put in a new, another line for me.
Yes, yeah, one thing to refer to is, for reasons we don't know why, but the, her water line actually cuts through the property.
My water line and the senior center line are together. That's the way they did that years ago.
Yeah, so we're going to separate those, and then do it properly, so there'll be a new line going to, or the drain. There'll be a new water line up as a water line.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, those questions.
And the town is going to pay for that, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
It's all planning, that's all planning board that will go through all that.
Right, there's going to be a public hearing, another one, right?
Yes.
Yeah, you can ask those questions at the public.
We're only here for the parking lot. That's it.
Oh, oh, oh.
We addressed that part.
When's the next meeting?
I don't know when they're. Planning, I think it's a couple of weeks, it's on a Tuesday. Is it the 27th?
Yeah, it's June 27.
June 27.
Oh, June, yeah.
And you can ask a lot more questions that night. Well, they'll, the people will be there that will have your answers, too.
Okay.
This is just to approve the additional parking and to look at the locations and that.
Oh, well, then you shouldn't have sent me the paper, the letter to come.
It's still a public hearing, so we have to.
Turn a Butter. Anytime you're Butter.
The Butters have to, they know that.
Just got to notify to make sure you know what's going on.
Okay. We're glad you came and had your, asked, got your.
Oh, yeah.
Answered, but if you have more, the June 27 meeting would be the one to go to.
Oh, good, good. No, I just want to make myself heard.
All right. So, do we have a motion?
Do you, do you want to just go through the findings before we close?
Before we close?
Yeah, maybe, and then we can just.
Okay. After we close the public hearing, we'll have two votes. One will be on the findings, which is the criteria for approval. One is it shall not be detrimental, such the use is not detrimental to the permitted uses in the zoning for which it is located. The nature of the operation shall be such that it will not be hazardous or create any danger to the public health and safety. Three, the use shall be consistent insofar as practicable with the comprehensive plan for the future development of the area. Four, provisions for roads and parking areas shall be laid out so as to prevent traffic hazards and nuisances. And five, the location, nature, and height of the building's walls, fences, and landscaping shall be such that it will use, the use will not hinder or discourage the appropriate development of adjacent land or adversely affect the character of the zone in which it is located. So, those are the findings that we're going to be voting on, but we have a motion to close the public hearing?
To close the public hearing?
Second?
Second.
You go for it.
You can take turns. Well, we should let Mike have the honors for...
Mike, you go for it.
I'll be the official second on the motion to close the public hearing. Oh, okay, good.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing? All right, unanimous? Do we have a motion?
Motion?
Go right ahead.
Motion to find pursuant to Article 15, Section 300 hyphen 15.2A for the property located at 480 Main Street. The project will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming, nonconformity use since the parking lot is extending into a nonconforming nature. Appropriate screening is being proposed with the installation of a fence. The site, once constructed, will comply with stormwater management standards and additional landscaping will be added to the site. The proposed addition to the building and the other portions of the parking lot will all comply with setback and lot coverage requirements.
Hey, do we have a second? Wait, then we'll have discussion if you have any.
Yeah, I just, I, and I know this has nothing to do with us...
Wait, let's do the second first.
Second, sorry.
Marge, you're seconding it? All those in favor?
No, we haven't discussed it.
Oh, yeah, discussion, go ahead, I'm sorry.
This goes back to the, I know it has nothing to do with studying that, but just a question, did they, is that who decides if they need a light app?
Yep.
Yes.
That would be like June 27th.
Okay, perfect, then I'm good, that's all I'm gonna get, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. All those in favor of the motion? Nope, it's unanimous? And now we have a second motion, right?
Motion to grant the special, motion to grant the special permit pursuant to Article 15, Section 300 hyphen 18.2 parentheses 2 to expand, change or alter a pre-existing nonconforming use for the parking lot for the property located at 480 Main Street. The applicant for the, the applicant for the proposal to expand the existing parking lot within the required rear setback to accommodate the proposed expansion of the senior center and additional parking. The rear setback is proposed at two feet. All other parking setbacks will comply with the bylaw according to the plans and documents entitled Sturbridge Senior Center prepared by Waterfield Design Group and Icon Architects. Plan date 3/15/2023, project number 222064-000 and WDG number W hyphen 1717 with the following conditions. All, all concerns for the building and fire inspectors shall be addressed through the building permit application phase of this project. Two, any substantial modifications to this plan must be submitted to the ZBA for review and approval. Three, all other state and local permits and approvals shall be obtained prior to the start of any construction.
Hey, do we have a second?
Second.
You're not seconding it, Mike?
I'm being very quiet.
Yeah, so, all right, so we have a motion and a second, and any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Okay. You are all set.
You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
June 27th. It's here, it's here. Where's the meeting?
They're up here, yeah. The planning board meetings are up here.
Yes.
And if it's gonna be somewhere else, then they announce it.
It's usually here.
It's gonna be up here at 6:30.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a great day.
Go over watch the records.
Please, our next is a determination for 18 Tintasqua Shore Drive for Matthew Jettie.
Thank you.
The applicant is requesting a determination for the construction of an upper dormer to an existing single-family home. Let's see. The, the property is located in rural residential zoning district and it is nonconforming in regards to the frontage and area only. The lot contains 0.25 acres and has 100, 100.73 feet of frontage. And the, the proposal is to construct an upper-story dormer, so there will be no new nonconformities. There have been no comments received back from any of the town departments. So, you can make your presentation.
I, I know that I spoke to Conservation, they approved it. The building inspection approved it already, and he signed off on it. So, just because normally, I believe it's 150 feet of frontage to be the conforming, and I fall under that, then I had to come in front of the board. It's really just a shed dormer, roughly about 15 to 17 feet. They're gonna be taking off my roof, and we're gonna be enlarging our bedroom. It's not facing the lake, so, that's all I've got.
At this time, I'll start at this end. Any questions, Mike?
Uh, no questions, just to confirm what the gentleman just said. It's a quarter acre lot, that's the reason he's here, and he's going up, not out.
Yeah.
So, there's no footprint issues involved at all, just really minor addition to the house.
Right.
Away we go.
Square footage. Square footage in the fact that I'm taking out my knee wall, so, yeah.
I don't have a problem with it at all.
Thank you.
I had a question, but now I don't remember what it is. I remember looking at the plan, I just had a, I'm trying to think what it was.
That's a septic plan you have in front of you, but it also has a dissemination of where the frontage is on the property.
I think it had to do with this map, but you're not, you're only, this other stuff on here is not, and it's not...
No, so that was, so, so when they put us, when they put the new septic in, we just purchased the house, we needed that for the frontage and for the side, the side property.
So, you're just going, you're just putting on that dormer, that's it?
Yeah, I sent some photos. Were the photos in?
It's okay.
Okay.
We're all set.
Yeah, no, we're just going up.
Right, this is what...
Are you next to the boat ramp?
No, there's one house, there's one house past that, next to me, and that's the little right-of-way they have for the water.
Nice.
We could use some rain right now.
Get put in my, my lawn says it too.
Anybody have any questions?
No.
No? Do we have a motion?
Motion? Motion to grant the determination to Matthew Jettie to allow the construction of an upper dormer to the existing single-family home located at 18 Tintasqua Shore, Shore Drive. According to the plans entitled Proposed Septic System, Louis Fraser Lynn Eckert, prepared by Green Hill Engineering dated 2/26/2018, project number 2018 hyphen 157, and the hand-drawn architectural plan. The determination does not create, does not intensify the existing or create additional nonconformities, and the owner may apply for a building permit for the described activities as shown on the attached survey, and he can get a building permit.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All will...
Oh, go ahead.
Just a simple comment about it. I, I have to laugh because when I see the plus or minus, because it always reminds me before when the structures were built previously, a 2x4 was a 2x4.
Oh, yeah, they're not anymore.
Phenomenal thing, so you have to do plus or minus.
This is true.
Right, that's where I'm laughing.
They're getting smaller, but you're paying more.
Yeah, yeah, so...
Always the case, always the case.
All right.
All right, all those in favor of the motion? Is unanimous?
Go for it and enjoy it.
Thank you so much, everyone. I appreciate your time tonight for it, too. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. I'll send you the signed decision tomorrow.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Anyway, so, is this your last meeting, Mike?
Yes, it's my last meeting, and if you would indulge me, I do have some new business.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to thank the entire board, as well as Jean Bouban and Janay Lacy, for being good people and making up a friendly and genuinely good ZBA that is here to help the citizens and small business owners of Sturbridge. Our job is to be objective and fair in everything we do. I hope and pray that will continue in the future. Our current good board was not always the case. During the first two years or so that I served on this board, we had a couple of problem members who let their own selfish arrogance color their discussions and votes. One of them committed an illegal act. Please, don't let that happen. Don't be afraid to speak up if you see that kind of behavior on the board. The citizens of Sturbridge do not deserve that under any circumstances. Thank you all once again from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you, Mike.
We're gonna miss you, thank you.
I will miss you.
And we thank you for your many years of service.
I couldn't believe it was nine years, it doesn't even...
Yes.
Can you imagine that?
Yes.
Can you imagine that?
Crazy.
And all the people that have come and gone since you've been on the board.
And I can relate to who he's speaking about because I sat here at the time.
Wow. We're the good board, so we won't speak or even have to ask him.
Keep up what we've got because it is really, really important to everybody in town, and it's a really, really good thing, what we've done.
That's why I got on here because years ago, if you weren't a resident or born in this town, you were not treated the same way. And I said, I always said, I don't care if Joe Blow comes from Kokomo, if I get on the board, I'm gonna treat everyone equally.
Absolutely.
Best way to do it.
We try to, we try to.
Thanks again.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, thanks, Mike.
Mr. Mike?
I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
You go right ahead.
Okay.
And who wants to second it?
Second.
Fidelis.
Okay.
All those in favor? We are adjourned.